Recording in progress.
Good morning. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, December 13th, meeting of the Board of Commissioners. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our first item this morning is approval of the accounts payable docket. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is something we do every month and recognize outstanding individuals and groups in our community. And we'll start with the citizen, or in this case, citizens of the month.
Citizens of the month are honored for helping to bring together our community. For the month of November, I am pleased to say our citizens of the month are the new Prairie High School varsity football team. They are the 2022 IHSSAA Class 4A state championship runner-ups. Every student athlete on this team helped each other succeed this season, and together they won the semi-state Class 4A title in Kokomo. On November 25th, they achieved the once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to play at Lucas Oil Stadium on November 25th, and showcased their great teamwork and showed off the essence of the St. Joseph County community. We are so proud of them. Yay!
Okay, Coach, you want to take your team up to microphone? And we've allotted 62 minutes for your speaking engagement.
Okay, today we have several seniors that were on our team, our record-setting team. First of all, my name is Coach Bill Gum.
My name...
Cole Staley, number 11.
Brady Burnett, number 6.
Like, look at us when you speak.
Tavion Orpman, number 88.
There you go, Saint Francis.
Bradz Fambrowanny, number 8.
Dustin Marsaywich, number 73.
Blake Morris, number 29.
I like all the hair.
Yeah, like I said earlier, obviously, we've been playing football for the last 15 weeks, so we haven't been to a barber in a while. But just want to congratulate these young men. Thank you, folks, for recognizing these young men. They worked real hard representing their community, both the New Carlisle and Royan Prairie communities. We're very proud of these guys. We got down to Lucas Oil Stadium, just literally thousands of fans there from our communities. We appreciate all the support throughout the county, other schools that supported us along the way. It really brings everybody together, being one of the only teams up north here to make it, you know, especially in St. Joe County, a lot of media attention. So these boys got highlighted, you know, quite a bit. But we thank everybody for their support this year.
Well, congratulations, and also to the other 80 members of the team who...
And then their four-year record was what, this group?
Somebody had that written down.
That's pretty good.
Yeah, we had three sectional championships in these, in their career. I had it written down somewhere, what their record was, but it was, it's unbelievable. It's like seven losses in their high school career, six losses, and both of the, majority of them coming at the end of the season. This was our second semi-state in a row. We can really say we were five minutes away from making the state championship two years in a row, because we lost last year to Northridge in the last five minutes of that ballgame. But we were able to redeem ourselves against Elkhart County. When we had them back out here for the semis, or for the regionals this year, we were able to beat them 55 to 7. So, yeah, we'd like to also congratulate the other, at least 80 guys on our teams, our 12, 13 coaches, you know, our managers, ballboys, everybody.
Yeah, just, like, what you guys have done is pretty amazing. It's not pretty amazing, it's amazing of that. There's probably about 1.1 million kids that play high school football, and all you have to do is go state by state and see how many sectionals they have, and then how many other Class 1, 2, 3, 4. So you're probably in a very elite group that's gone downstate twice, actually. So as you proceed in your life, whether you're going to college, whether you're gonna work somewhere, whether you're gonna play football in college, just always remember all of the things that happen, because as you get older, the tackles will be harder, your stories about the path you through, and all that stuff. But all the friends that you've met, all of your teammates over the years who picked you up when you missed a block, or missed a tackle, and all that, just remember all that. But also thank your parents, grandparents, whoever bought you the new shoes you had to had, the new gloves, the new gear, everything that y'all had to get during your careers, which is quite amazing. So what the coaches have set for you, as they want to say, helps you out in life, all the discipline, the hard work, all the camaraderie that you have got from your high school days. So always remember those. But as you go on to the next step, remember that building block that you guys, that's set for you at school at New Prairie, to take you up to the next level and what you decide to do. So, community's proud of you. Do any of the players want to talk about anything in particular? Come on, man, get up there. Yeah, well, we'll get them at another time, so make sure you take them to lunch. You have a plaque up here, y'all have these beautiful pins that are sterling silver? Sterling silver.
Thank you, sir.
You got like, what's your, what's your, 1, 2, 3, what? What do y'all do?
Can't say.
Oh, okay.
Take care, and a Merry Christmas.
Want to say something about the Boozes of the Month?
Yeah. We'll take it to them tomorrow.
Well, we go from a celebratory recognition to a sad recognition, but we are so proud of the recipient of this month's Youth of the Month. And I'm gonna read this, so I don't miss anything. "Our Youth of the Month for November is Kayden Garrett. Kayden is nine years old, and is being honored today for his bravery and his strength. On November 10th of this year, Kayden was staying at his father's house. Around 7:30 in the morning, he went to wake his father and found him unresponsive. He called 911 and spoke to the operator as they walked him through how to perform CPR on his father. He continued until the EMS and police arrived. Unfortunately, his father was gone, but what Kayden did was so heroic. We know he gave his all to save his dad, and we are so proud of his strength and bravery which he showed, and we hear he continues to show to this day. We're grateful for the opportunity to showcase this young man as our Youth of the Month." Let's give it up for Kayden. Why don't you come up and... Would you like to, anybody like to add anything as well? Family, you can come up and join him.
Please do.
My name is Kayden. My name is Kayden.
We're very proud of what he did, and he's been very strong.
Well, as we said before, it's a lot of strength to be able to do what he did. And Kayden, I'm sure your dad, looking down, appreciates your efforts. And, again, really, a sad, sad in one way, but it's great to be able to recognize a young man who had that strength and courage to do what you did. So... Let's go up and get a picture.
Thank you so much for all your hard work. Thank you all for coming. Thank you for having us. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. Bless you.
Quite a young man. Well, the next item on the agenda are bills passed by the St. Joseph County Council. I'll take these one at a time. First, Bill Number 165-22, which becomes Ordinance 142-22. It's a salary amendment and transfer for archives. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is Bill Number 166-22, which becomes Ordinance Number 143-22, a salary amendment and transfer for infrastructure planning and growth. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill Number 168-22 becomes Ordinance 144-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for the prosecutor. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill Number 169-22 becomes Ordinance 145-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for the prosecutor. Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next, Bill 170-22 becomes Ordinance 146-22, a salary amendment and appropriation for portage manner. Do we have a motion?
Well, a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill Number 164-22 becomes Ordinance 147-22, transfers and appropriations for the month of December of this year. Do we have a motion?
Well, a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Bill Number 167-22 becomes Ordinance 148-22, American Rescue Plan funds transfer to infrastructure planning and growth. Do we have a motion?
Well, a motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
And finally, Bill 147-22 becomes Ordinance 149-22, code book amendments for fees and fines in the Health Department. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve it.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next item is approval of notice to bidders for the interior remodel of the PSAP facility.
Oh, we missed F and G there.
Whoops.
F and G.
Oh, I'm sorry. Just one moment.
Are we on F?
Yes, we're on F. Resolution R25-C-2022, approval of a real estate agreement. Sorry, Bill.
That's okay. Bill Shalillo, Economic Development, part of the Department of Infrastructure Planning and Growth, with offices on the 7th and 11th floor. Before you today is Resolution R25-C-2022, and this is authorizing the purchase of a piece of property at 56150 Larison Boulevard. The Bishop family that owned this property, we've been working with them really since September of 2018 on a potential acquisition of their property. Their property sits between State Road 2 and Fillmore Road on the east side of Larison Boulevard. There's a map in the packet of where they're located. Over the last several years, as we've talked about road improvements on Larison, intersection improvements at State Road 2, battery plants in what could be their front yard, and improvements around them, they have decided and determined that it's ready, they're ready to move on. We have appraised the property, have two appraisals for the property. Average appraised value is $118,000, and then with relocation, that would add an additional $40,000. The Board of Commissioners at their meeting just moments ago approved a similar resolution to approve funding for this acquisition. We would ask for your approval of this resolution.
The Board of Commissioners did something earlier than that?
I'm sorry, I meant the redevelopment commissioners, at their meeting moments ago.
All right, just checking.
And we would ask the Board of Commissioners at their meeting now to consider this resolution to approve for the purchase of this property. If there's any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Bill, will there be further acquisitions along that corridor?
So there are two properties that front onto Larison, this one and the adjacent neighbor. The adjacent neighbors aren't overly excited or interested in moving at this point in time. This family is. And like I say, we've been talking with them for several years, have appraised the property over multiple times. I don't anticipate another acquisition, but I would imagine as soon as we start doing work in that corridor, then there may be some discussion about future acquisitions.
How many acres is this?
So this is just a little over an acre and a half, I believe. It's a pretty small piece of property.
Okay, what were they paying in property taxes?
A little more than 118, I mean, their appraised value for what they were paying was a little more than this $118,000, but their property tax bill itself, I believe, was in the neighborhood of $1,500 to $2,000.
Okay. And the $40,000 of relocation moving expenses will be for what?
So to relocate them. So it's part of the governing process at which we buy property. If there's a property owner in the structure, and we're choosing to acquire them, then we have obligations to provide relocation expenses. So this would be those expenses. We work through the tables, it's provided by state through indot, and so those $40,000 would be the cap at which we could extend additional resources to help with their relocation.
So that means what? You're gonna find a place to live?
No. So these would be additional costs to allow them to cover their moving expenses, startup fees, reconnections, those kind of things, as part of their moving process.
And then moving expenses is moving their stuff?
Yes.
Okay. Where are they moving to?
So they are looking at a piece of property in New Carlisle, so they're looking to move into town or into the town area, and away from the industrial development in this corridor.
Do they have a moving company? I'm looking at if we're, how do we know that's gonna be 40, that whole toll bill will be 40,000?
So indot has a formula that you plug in all the different equations, one of those fixed...
So if two guys in a truck start to take their stuff, and that's gonna be minimal of whatever, we're still gonna get 40 grand to pay for all this?
So the cost structure in the indot guidelines, the way it works out, there's certain fixed costs that you have to pay when you acquire properties, which is generally why we buy properties that are vacant or abandoned, so that we don't have relocation expenses.
And then when you started with these people back in '18, you guys couldn't agree on a price, or how did, why did it take four years before?
So it was really, really a function of, did they wanna, did they wanna move, did they, they had some interest in knowing what we were looking to do. Part of the large, part of the reason we were contacted with, by them originally, was because of trash that was falling off trucks, going to the recycle yard, going to the scrapyard. So that was where the first contacts were made. And then just over the years, as we've had additional conversations, we've done cleanup on the property south of theirs, as we've talked about what this project could be as far as the Ultium projects and things like that. That's what spurred the conversation on relocation.
So in '18, did they have a, in '18, did they have like a higher price than what y'all paid for now?
Well, so we're bound by buying property through the Board of Commissioners by the average of two appraisals.
But were the appraisals higher back in '18 than they are now?
No, they've always been lower. So this is, as the market has increased, the appraisals have increased.
Okay. I have no further questions at this time.
Do we have a motion? Oh, I'm sorry.
We need your name and address for the record, sir.
My question is, are they occupying this home right now?
Yes.
And where does this property sit in conjunction with Larison Boulevard? Where exactly is that?
Well, there's a map on the, in the packet, but it sits on Larison between State Road 2 and Fillmore.
So it's in the middle between the two roads there?
Yes.
I was just gonna say, here it is.
Is there a farm that's, are they right off of Fillmore, where there's a farm that's just in the north of that?
No, there's a farm north of them, and then Fillmore is the next roadway.
And that sale price was how much?
$118,000 would be the average of two appraisals.
Any other questions, comments? Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the real estate purchase agreement.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next is Resolution R26-C-2022, intend to conduct a commissioner's sale, to sell tax sale certificates.
Good morning, I'm John Murphy, Chief Deputy Auditor. I'm happy to introduce Patty Henry, who's one of the preeminent experts in tax, property tax issues in this area. So why don't you, she'll give the presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Patty Henry, property tax, senior property tax specialist with the Auditor's Office on the second floor.
A preeminent expert, he said.
And, and so, we conduct our tax sales, our normal tax sales of all the property with delinquent taxes, they have to be a year and a half delinquent in property taxes in September. The commissioner's sale is held in March of all the unsold properties from that September sale. So anything that didn't sell in the September sale will be offered at, the commissioners hold a certificate, and, and so that will be, those will be offered in the March of 2023 commissioner's sale.
It's quite an extensive list.
Yes, yes, but it is down from previous years. It's, it's down quite a bit from previous years.
So at the end of the day, if nobody bids on stuff, we, the county ends up having those properties?
We no longer take ownership. We used to take ownership. We no longer take ownership of those. We simply hold the tax sale certificate, and if they don't sell in the commissioner's sale, then they're later offered, they go back onto the September sale, and they go through the cycle. The ones that, that have been on the sale for years, we sell those for a percentage of what the property taxes are due, trying to get those back on the property tax rolls. But yeah, it's, it's a cycle.
Do you know how many properties we own in St. Joe County?
How many the Board of Commissioners own?
Lots of stuff like that.
I, I do not know the amount of properties that the commissioners own at this time.
Okay.
I know that we, the commissioners have not taken ownerships.
Yeah, we've talked about that. We've got a lot of properties that are sitting there that, if I gotta do something with, once things slow down. Go ahead, Deb.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I'm looking for the list of all the properties.
At the Board of Commissioners? I can, I can get that to you.
We have it. I'll get with you later, thanks.
Okay.
We've got it.
I got it, thanks.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't get it. I'm sorry, because it was added.
Don't laugh.
Because I've seen it in the past, and so I'm impressed with that, and so, yeah, thank you.
Thanks, John.
I did so much.
Any further questions? If not, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the tax sale certificates for these properties.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna move on to PSAP, approval of notice to bidders for the interior remodel of the PSAP facility.
Hello, I'm Cassandra Quissel with DLZ. Julie could not make it today, she had another meeting. So I'm asking for approval to release for bid the documents dated December 9th, for a non-mandatory bid meeting to happen January 3rd at 11 p.m., or AM, sorry, at the PSAP facility. And then the bids open on the January 10th Commissioners Board Meeting at 10 a.m. Any questions?
No, we're just listening bids?
Yep.
No, I'd like to thank DLZ, and this is something that we started last year with Councilman Kroschinsky after we got a new director, talked to the director who's there now, of all the improvements that they'd like to see. So this has been a work in progress for well over a year now. So thanks to all that, I think it's gonna be a good thing eventually for EMA and everybody as we keep going on. So it's a, besides things going well at PSAP, with all the employees and all the stuff that the council and the commissioners did previous to get that up and running like it should, and the new things that y'all are gonna do for them is a good, a good thing. It's a win-win.
Yes.
Glad we're moving ahead.
Thank you.
There being no further questions or comments, do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the bidders for the interior remodel for PSAP facility.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
I'm going aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Moving on to EMA, Approval of Engineering Services Agreement for the Emergency Outdoor Warning System. Good morning, buddy.
Good morning, Council. My name's Al Kurzits. I'm the Director of the EMA.
I'm the Director of the EMA Offices at-
It's commissioners, not counsel.
Oh, yeah, excuse me.
Shook him up right away.
The commissioners, counsel. Commissioners, good morning. I'm Al Kursitz, Director of the Emergency Management Agency for St. Joe County with offices at one twenty-five South Lafayette Street, basically across the street where the door is always open and you're always welcome to stop by. What we have here is an agreement with DLZ to approve them moving forward using one point five nine million dollars on the services agreement for the Emergency Outdoor Warning System. We've been before to talk to you about audit. The system is rather old, needs some upgrades. We're fortunate to have this system and I would ask for your approval. Just as an incidence, we received a call last week from employees at Bendix Woods County Park that one of our sirens out there, that they had noticed the box that holds the battery backup system had completely rusted out and the weight of the batteries were dangling. And we were able to get our repair mechanic out there to Band-Aid it up and fix it. But this is something that is needed for this county and I hope you'll approve it.
Buddy, is there a timeline on when they design-
It goes in several phases. And in the document, in the contract, they have a phase A, B, and C. Again, this is initially going through and establishing exactly what needs to be done through the process. So I would hope by the end of year, it would all be done. We do have representatives here. But the first phase is going through and identifying all the needs of every siren, what they have to upgrade. It also includes software upgrade to the entire system. And it includes the addition of five new sirens that are located in growth areas with two sirens in reserve.
So currently we have how many sirens?
Sixty-seven, I believe it is.
Okay, Lopez is shaking his head, so you're right.
And we have a map of them in our headquarters.
And once all that stuff is done, all of them may be up and running?
Absolutely. And hopefully, yeah, it'll be up and running. And we've been working with Federal Signal to... About our license and agreement and to come in and give us more training on that supposedly be able to activate it from our phones if necessary.
That's why we picked you guys. But again, thank you. This is something, again, we started well, well... Well over a year and a half ago with Councilman Krasinski and I, all looking into all of the... The sad state that all the sirens were in before y'all came through. We attempted to try to get the previous people to do that. Didn't work. So again, thank you guys, you and Jim, for taking the lead on this. DLZ, who's been a good reference point and gave us all the information well over a year and a half, if not coming up on two years, to get all these done. So it is a very important thing for the county to have all of these working. So again, appreciate all the work you're doing.
Thank you.
If there's no further questions or comments, do we have a motion?
We got another question.
Oh, I can't see him out there.
Regarding the sixty-seven sirens, so this one point five million, is that update all... Are every one of them going to be completely new? Or is this just an upgrade? I know the sirens were in bad shape for a long time. And what exactly is this one point five million? Is that providing all-new boxes, all-new? All components will be new, correct?
Yeah, the new electronic motherboards in them and stuff. And each siren will be inspected, evaluated on what needs to be new and put in new components on that. The basic infrastructure as far as the poles and the mechanical siren itself is good. It still has about twenty years' operational life. But this will improve all the components on it.
That would be good, improved.
The council previously approved the one point five million through the ARP. So this is for the design work. Any other questions?
This is ERP money, just sort of is aware of that.
Yes, it is.
Do we have a motion?
A motion to approve the Engineering Services Agreement for the Emergency Outdoor Warning System.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thanks, buddy. Next item is the Approval of the Interlocal Agreement between St. Joseph County and Transpo relating to Unified Health Benefit Self-Insurance Plan. Good morning, Kim.
Good morning, Commissioners. Kim Karkowitz, Human Resource Director, St. Joseph County. Offices on the seventh floor of the building. This interlocal agreement is between St. Joseph County and Transpo relating to our self-funded health insurance, where we have a couple of interlocal agreements for our partners within the community to be able to get health insurance at a reasonable price through interlocal agreement with the county. This agreement will be one that will be in effect January one of twenty twenty-three and has added the ability for some refund option to the interlocal and a surplus refund options also with rebates. This proposal and contract has been constructed with our county attorney, Pete Augustino, along with the work of Troy Scott and Bob Frick of our broker.
How was this done prior to this?
So we did have a previous interlocal agreement with them. This is just adding that other feature of prescription rebates of them being able to get a portion of that also, which in previous they have not. And there are funds that they have in our account set aside for them that they might be able to take some of those funds out if need be. Both, their fund is very well at this time, well-funded. So we're in no concern with that. The auditor has done a great job in providing quarterly reports on exactly where those funds are.
Any questions, comments?
I'm good. Connor, you got a question on this one?
Do we have a motion?
A motion to renew the agreement for the Unified Health Benefit Self-Insurance Plan.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to Infrastructure Planning and Growth. The first item is the Consent Agenda, of which we have one item, Approval of Speed Limit on Clover Road from thirteen hundred and twenty feet south of Dragoon Trail to Jackson Road. Any question on that?
Negative.
Do we have a motion on the Consent Agenda?
Motion to approve the Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you very much. Bill Schaleo, Economic Development. Two proposals for professional services for appraisals for acquisition. These are for a property of one four three eight zero East Douglas Road. It's just a property that's sandwiched between Capitol Avenue and the end of the Mishawaka City Limits on Douglas. So just east of Veterans Parkway. This would be a property that we'd like to appraise for acquisition, presently vacant. And so we need to get two appraisals to set the value. The Redevelopment Commission at their meeting earlier today approved these resolutions. They just need to come to you or approve these agreements. These two documents come to you for your approval. One is in the amount of five hundred and fifty dollars to Appraisal Services, Inc. The other one is to Iverson Grove in the amount of six hundred dollars. Staff would request your favorable approval, please.
Bill, can you provide a little background as to the reason?
Yeah, so over the last several years, we've been working with City of Mishawaka and been working with indot, the two partners on either side of this one section of Douglas Road that's in the county or still in the unincorporated areas. As Mishawaka has made improvements of five-lane road segment, the state has made improvements on a five-lane road segment west of Capitol. We, the county, would be responsible for improving the roadway between. So what we're looking to do is acquire properties as they become available for a future roadway improvement, for either an at-grade roadway improvement where we'd expand the road to five lanes or for a future roadway improvement that would contemplate an overpass over the Canadian National Tracks. So this is a property, again, available. The Board of Commissioners at its last meeting, I believe, approved for the purchase of fourteen four forty East Douglas, our property two to the west. So this would just be another property that's available in that corridor. There's no other properties presently available or vacant in that corridor. So this would be the last acquisition we would do unless other properties presented themselves.
You're good?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, but you just need to have both of these to give better appraisals then, is that right?
Correct, yeah. So we'd need two independent appraisals and then we offer the average value.
Can we do both of these at the same or just one at a time?
Two at a time. So the first is the Approval of the Professional Services Agreement for fourteen three oh eight East Douglas Road with Appraisal Services, Inc. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
The next is the Approval of the Professional Services Agreement for the same property with Iverson Grove. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Our last item is Approval of Resolution of Property Transfer to the City of Mishawaka for the Cedar Street Bridge over the St. Joseph River Sidewalk and Trail Reconstruction Project.
Smile, dude.
Sky Matters, Department of this, Structure Planning and Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. What you have before you here is a resolution to transfer property on the northeast quadrant of Cedar Street Bridge over the St. Joseph River. Mishawaka will be doing a project where they'll be putting a trail across that bridge and needed this property for that purpose. We would be transferring it to them, but keeping the rights to... And to be able to use that property to access the bridge if needed and for bridge inspections. Counsel has reviewed this and we recommend your approval.
No money out of our pocket?
Pardon me?
No money out of our pocket?
No, sir.
Seems pretty straightforward. Any questions, comments? Do we have a motion to approve the property transfer to the City of Mishawaka?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote? Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There being no old business, we will move on to public comment, first for those in the room.
Any Christmas poems?
Any Christmas poems?
Seriously?
Poems. He's asking Deborah. I see that Cynthia Heckman Heckman has a hand up on the online attendees.
Good morning, Commissioners. Can you hear me?
We can.
The sound quality has not been good today.
Okay. Thank... She said that the sound quality has not been good for the people online. But we can hear you. Would you please go ahead?
Thank you. The funds from the Johnson and Johnson opioid settlement are to be distributed over seventeen years. As I recall, this was an opt-out, opt-in arrangement and St. Joe County finally decided to opt in to receive their share of those distributions. Our Attorney General Roquita said in February that payments would start between April and June. And finally, last week, I understand those funds were to be distributed. I'm wondering how much has St. Joe County gotten or if those funds have yet to arrive? I feel that the sooner we get the money, the more services our county can provide and that money will save lives. I understand that seventy percent of the distribution is designated directly for opioid abatement efforts. And I'm wondering if that means that goes... That seventy percent goes directly to our Department of Health. The other thirty percent, I understand, is designated as the county chooses. And I'm wondering what plans the Board of Commissioner has for that thirty percent. I would ask that the Board of Commissioners also seek guidance from our Department of Health on how to distribute and use those funds. Thank you.
President Baxmeyer, we could have John Murphy?
I saw him smile.
Answer that quickly so she has an answer. Since you're the preeminent expert in this...
In opioid cash?
Mr. Mish might be. We did receive in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand dollars in on the restricted portion, which we've deposited into a separate fund. The State Board of Accounts requires we have set up two new funds and one for the restricted portion, one for the unrestricted. So that deposit has been made. And we received about a hundred and forty thousand in unrestricted money. And that deposit has been deposited, that has been received. I'm assuming, like other funds, that it has to be budgeted. So during the normal course of go to council and then it come to the commissioner. So that's how I assume it will work, unless, Mike, you know any differently than that?
We're still working with the state on guidance and Mr. Dalton and I have had discussions. There has been a meeting with the Department of Health on what they would like to see the funds go towards. But at this point, you're correct. We'd have to go through the full appropriation process to use the funds and ultimately distribute them.
Good. So it's good that they're in separate funds so that we'll be able to track that very easily if these payments continue, you know, into the future.
And those funds were just recently received.
Yeah, we received them like yesterday, I think. You know, we... You know, maybe over the weekend. We did the record-keeping yesterday, so.
Great. Thank you so much for all your work.
Any other people online wish to make a comment?
Hodges, do you have anything for us? Apparently not.
If not, do we have a motion to recess?
Well, let me just say, I wish you a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Yes. Okay. A motion to recess.
And good tidings to you. I'll second it.
Commissioner Dieter, how do you vote?
Going aye.
Commissioner Fleming, how do you vote?
Aye.
Commissioner Baxmeyer, how do you vote?
Aye. Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Old King Wesselsloss, we could throw a verse of that out.
I can only sing if we had a shower in here, so.
That's right.
Here, have your ninety-five dollar... Sure, okay.